I want to call the meeting to order and before we begin, I will ask the town manager to read the disclaimer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a reminder to all residents and participants that this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the town website. So there's a public comment period at the outside of the meeting and we were asked that residents, please hold questions until you've been called on to use the raise hand feature if you'd like to speak. Before you make your comments, please state your name and the street you live on for records-keeping purposes and we will also ask that you please limit your comments to two minutes per person. If for some reason this meeting gets interrupted or dropped, we will immediately send out new instructions on a new meeting link by email. With that, I will turn it over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. So we will start with our public comment period. If any resident or guest has a comment or question, please raise your hand. Has anyone?
No comments at this time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, everybody. The next item is approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Is there a second? I see Zoyg Hauser. Is the discussion hearing done? All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. The next item is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I, before we, it was pointed out to me that there was an error on the, on the special meeting minutes, so I, I wasn't able to edit that today. So it might make more sense to have that.
Is it, is it an error or is it just a typo?
It's an error. A sentence got cut off.
Okay, well, I would say, why don't somebody move it, move the consent with eliminating the, those minutes and that can be on next month's consent agenda. Madam President.
And except for the council meeting and work session of February 8th, 2021.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
I C P L, is there discussion hearing? None? All those in favor? All those opposed? And then next month, I presume we will put that, those minutes on the consent agenda so that everybody can read the, the, the change.
I can even make the change quickly and just have it at the front of the council work session if, if that's the proper, either, either.
Yeah, the council work session, we don't want to load anything on to that.
Okay.
Okay, uh, next item is public hearing motion to consider a three-month extension through June 30th, 2021 on the moratorium on the rental of Town of Somerset Public Spaces and Facilities and the continued use of Zoom as a virtual town meeting setting, currently set to expire. The current, uh, moratorium will expire on March 31st, 2021. Mr. Town Manager, can you please present this?
Sure, so, um, back, uh, back in March of last year, um, the council did a three-month extension, excuse me, a three-month moratorium on the rental of the town hall space, thinking maybe three months from now, we'll be able to meet again in person and lo and behold, here we are, one year later. And so, uh, this would extend the rental of the town hall and the town hall green space through June of, of this year. The only thing that I wanted to put on your radar before you make a motion is that the Camp Somerset folks have reached out to us about potentially using the town hall, um, and the town hall green space as a backup in case the Somerset Elementary does not allow them to use, um, their space.
Well, well, yes, and there's other, there's another possibility that the school, we're meeting with the school this week in case they want, but if any, I would suggest, and then, you know, I'll go to questions, but I would suggest everyone that the moratorium be passed and then if any exceptions come up, we will present that to the council. So that would be my suggestion, but, but also on your radar should be that we're meeting with the principal and the PTA this week because they have some ideas that they want to discuss. With that, Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
Matt, I just want to clarify, it's not just the town hall and the green space at the town hall, doesn't it also include, um, the parkland and the tennis courts and the swimming pool?
Yes, thanks for that clarification. Previously, um, the council had, had approved a moratorium on the rental of the town hall, all town hall public spaces and facilities. So as, as you say, it's the town hall, the green spaces, the swimming pool, the parkland and the tennis courts.
Do you, do you have any other questions, Madam President? Okay, thank you.
That's it, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Council member Zoyg Hauser.
Yeah, Matt, just, I was, just to, if you could just clarify, are you saying that they want to use the town hall proper, the building itself as a backup?
So they would like to do their tennis camp as they normally do with, with fewer students at a time. They're hopeful, um, that they'll be able to use the school and the outside area at the school as their main camp area. However, in the event that the school is not available, they were hopeful to use the town hall green space as their general camp area and then also to use the town hall for things like storing lunchboxes and potentially even allowing a nurse to set up in the town hall.
Okay, but we'll consider that at another time, is that correct?
That's right, they, they don't have a, a full presentation for you or proposal before you yet.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Council Member Peel.
Yes, I guess, I just wanted to talk a little bit about why we would have a three-month moratorium on some of these outdoor spaces when they're actually in use. I mean, tennis courts are in use and the parks.
It's the rental, it's the rental.
I understand that, but I'm not sure if I understand why we would restrict the rental if it's a normal activity that we would allow under.
Because we don't, this is, this is because we were getting all kinds of requests to rent the space and, and this way.
I understand about the town hall, but I don't, what I don't understand is why we would extend it to the tennis courts in particular when those are being used.
That's because, no, this is for the rental, no, this is the moratorium of the rental. So there were outside groups asking to rent the tennis courts, rent the parkland, rent everything. That's what this, that's what this moratorium is.
I'm sorry, just bear with me for a second. These are things that we would normally be open to, but we have a moratorium on those rentals right now because of the pandemic and we want to extend it?
Right, that's what it is.
But, these are all things that are being used by people in our town outdoors right now, so it's not like the use is the problem, we just don't want to have to deal with the rentals.
We don't want to have to, we don't want to, we don't want to bring all these offers to the town hall, to, I mean, to the town council and waste your time.
Well, I, I, like I said, I do understand about the town hall because that's inside, but I'm not sure if I understand why we would restrict the outside areas.
I, I'll let Matt answer that.
I was going to say, I believe the reason it had been considered previously, the two main reasons were, one, it was difficult to ensure that proper social distancing was being upheld and that we didn't have the capacity to, to ensure that. And then the second was because there were limited spots available for people at, at the tennis court and the pool, for example, and since there, there are fewer activities for people to enjoy, I think at that point that we wanted to limit it to town residents.
Okay, thank you for explaining that, I just wanted to understand it, I don't have any questions.
But we were, but also, Councilor Peel, we were getting all kinds of offers that, that otherwise we would pass on to the council and it's not fair to the people that, that were making the offer to mislead them. So that, that was another reason.
Okay, I just hope that, you know, before it starts up again for the summer, that we sort of stop and look and see whether it's still necessary on a, like, section by section basis, like it might still be necessary for the town hall, but maybe it would not be necessary for the swimming pool. So I know this is all packaged together right now.
That's right.
But maybe we could get it, yeah.
That's right.
Okay.
But after three months, then all that'll be at your, at the council's option.
Bit by bit, okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Circa, do you have any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Barr, do you have any questions?
Well, it's, it's just a follow-up and for any, obviously, in a, in a public health standpoint, outdoor settings are a lot less risky for infection than indoor settings. And we don't need to be public health experts to say that we require anybody who uses this space to follow current public health guidelines as advocated by the state and established by the county. So, but on the other hand, I think we should look at each case individually, including Camp Somerset, to see what precautions they are using and how they intend to maintain health standards. So as long as we all understand that can be done, then I'm happy to go along with this resolution.
Well, that's why, yes, that's why I said earlier that it can be amended on a case-by-case basis for groups that we have a historic relationship with, but we wouldn't want the general public to know that it's open game now and then we're going to start getting all these offers that we would have to waste time processing. That, that was the philosophy behind it. Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, are there, are there any comments or questions from our residents or guests?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you, council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I move that the council approve a three-month extension through June 30th, 2021 on the moratorium on the rental of the Town of Somerset Public Spaces and Facilities and the continued use of Zoom as a virtual town meeting setting.
Thank you, I think I saw Councilman Peel seconded. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed, thank you very much. The next item is public hearing motion to consider approval of a building construction permit submitted by Jamie and Alan Kaplan to erect a children's playhouse in the rear yard of the property located at 4808 Cumberland Avenue. That is the agenda item, but now I will convene the hearing. Today, is our, is our town attorney is here, yes. Today is March 1st, 2021. This is a hearing before the Town of Somerset Council for Permit Application Number 2103 AB, submitted by Alan Kaplan to consider construction of the playhouse in the rear yard of the property located at 4808 Cumberland Avenue. In the event that a transcript of this hearing is required, this hearing is being audio-recorded. We ask that all speakers speak one at a time, addressing the council from the podium and by speaking into the microphone, this is all arbitrarily, and state their name and address for the record before making public comment. The hearing will observe the following order. First, the Somerset Town staff will present their findings and submit for the record a report on the application under consideration. Next, the applicant will present their application. Third, the Somerset Town Council will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff relevant to the application at hand. Next, other interested parties will have the opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or present comments to the council. Then the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal, testimony, after which the public comment period of the hearing shall be completed and the record closed. Finally, the council will deliberate and discuss amongst themselves the merits of the case, the findings of fact and conclusions. The council may make a motion on a permit decision. If any opposition is presented, the town attorney will be asked to write a decision and a permit shall not be issued before the expiration of 30 days to allow time for an appeal. If no opposition is presented, the town manager will be asked to issue a permit. And now I will turn it over to the town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back in late January of this year, um, the Kaplins reached out to us about building a playhouse in their backyard. They, uh, had recently moved, they're, they're somewhat new residents and, and so I don't think they completely understood the, the process for obtaining building permits and actually constructed something in their rear yard and then were, um, informed that they needed a permit after the fact. And so, um, when our staff looked into it, we, we told them that they would need a permit for an accessory building and we reached out to the county as well to find out what the county's requirements might be because, uh, whereas a lot of times they think of playhouse and it might be a treehouse or a, uh, plastic movable structure, this was, this had a footing and so, um, we relayed the, the need for permit and the, uh, setback requirements and informed the applicant that in order to receive a town permit, they would either need to move the structure to comply with the town setbacks or to seek a waiver variance to keep it in the spot that it, it was. And after working with their, uh, builder, they elected to move the structure to comply with the town's setback conditions, which is reflected in the plans before the council. With that, I, I will turn it over to our town building administrator and engineering consultant, Doug Lowmeyer.
Good evening. As Matt was saying, the applicants have submitted an application to construct a playhouse in the backyard at 4808 Cumberland. The application is to remove the existing playhouse and to install it so that it complied with the town setbacks. The plans indicate the playhouse will be 10 feet off the ground, uh, on two-foot stilts. The playhouse will be set back approximately 100 feet from Cumberland Avenue and behind the existing house. The plan shows the playhouse will be set back five and a half feet from the rear property line and five feet from the right side property line. The town code states an accessory structure, no taller than 10 feet, must be set back a minimum of five feet from the rear and the side property lines. All three setbacks comply with the town setback for an accessory structure. I recommend that as soon as the playhouse is constructed, the applicant provide the town with the actual height of the structure and the rear and side yard setbacks. I recommend the council approve the permit for the accessory structure at 4808 Cumberland, but not issue the permit until Montgomery County has issued a building permit for the playhouse. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, is the applicant present?
Yeah, I believe so. Can I, can anybody hear me?
Is that the 202, oh, yes, um, the town manager just identified you. Thank you, sir. You now have the opportunity to present or make comments on the report. Identify yourself for the record, please.
Sure, uh, so my name's Alan Kaplan, I'm the homeowner at 4808 Cumberland, um, uh, agree with everything that, uh, Mr. Trolinger put forth, um, the only thing that I would, that I would add is we, we communicated directly with the permit, um, manager at, um, at Montgomery County who explicitly stated that they, uh, and we have it, um, in writing, that they don't consider this a, uh, an accessory structure and so they wouldn't issue a permit and, and or doesn't require permitting from their end.
Does, is that, is that, could your remarks?
Yes.
Thank you, sir, thank you for being here tonight. Uh, Council, but Council President Shaw, do you have any questions?
Just one, I, maybe I missed it, is there a neighborhood review sheet that neighbors have signed off on in this package?
The applicant, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Alan, I believe that you had sent around an email with the information to, um, your neighbors, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. With the plans, the same plans that you guys are looking at.
Is there anything in the package, um, Matt, that the council received that would show that or did I miss it maybe?
I'm looking at what I included for you, um. I don't believe I had, um, I don't believe I included anything in there for you.
Do you have it in your files?
Yes, I, I do have an email, um, that Mr. Kaplan had CC'd our office on, I apologize for not including that.
That shows each of the neighbors signed off in some fashion.
That shows that the neighbors were notified of it.
So how, how do you know they were notified?
It has their emails.
The email that went to, that, that says they were sent it or the email that says they saw it?
We, we were forwarded the email that the applicant sent to all of their neighbors.
Apparently, I think that we, we like to see like the initials or something that, that shows that they actually got it.
Okay.
That's my only question, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Zoyg Hauser.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peel.
Uh, yeah, I guess I have some questions here because, um, is, is Ron on the phone?
Yes, he is. He's ready to answer your question.
Yes, I am.
I guess I want to make sure I understand what we're doing here and we believe that the Kaplins need a town permit for an accessory structure because it has footings, is that right?
A town permit is needed because this is by definition an accessory building because it has one or more stories and a roof and it's built for the enclosure of persons or property, even though it's a, you know, a playhouse.
Right.
It is a accessory structure under the town code.
So, the fact is that we're hearing from the applicant that Montgomery County does not consider this to be an accessory structure and it does not think that it needs to issue a permit for this.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to see the applicant's letter to the county and the county's confirmation is that the county's opinion does surprise me somewhat because in the past, for example, the county's taken the position that a chicken coop is not a structure if it's portable, but if it's fixed to the ground, it is an accessory building. Yes. You know, this.
Can I respond to that, please?
This treehouse being on stilts that are fixed to the ground.
You'll have a chance.
Would seem to be.
I, I guess, I, I think we have a discrepancy here and I just want to go back to Doug's recommendation, which is that we issue the permit conditioned on the receipt of a Montgomery County permit and I think it seems, it seems at the moment that we're being told that that's not something that's going to happen, so I don't think we can.
Right, so the, the motion.
Have a conversation about conditioning our permit on a receipt of permit from the county, so whatever.
So the motion to approve would be a motion to approve and have the permit issued if one of two things happens, the county confirms that a permit is not required or the county permit is obtained.
Okay.
Matt? Matt?
I, I may have another question, but it sounds like Doug has an answer, so I'm okay with that.
Yeah, can I try to explain?
Mr. Kaplan, that's, go ahead.
Do you want to go?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
We, we, yeah, we received Mr. Kaplan's email and I contacted the reviewer at Montgomery County who issued the email and she explained to me that it was her understanding that the playhouse was sitting on the ground and once she saw the sketches showing that the playhouse was supported by four columns and required footings, it was her decision that yes, a county permit would be required. So, uh, because it's suspended in the air, it requires a county building permit.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that we in fact are looking for a county building permit, we believe it's required and that's where we are as of tonight.
Yes.
So that when we continue talking about this, we, we all are on the same page on that.
And has that been shared with the applicant, Doug?
Excuse me?
No.
Okay.
Could I, could I have an opportunity here? This is Alan Kaplan.
If, if, if the council.
It's fine with me, I'd like to hear from Mr. Kaplan, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. So, so, um, first off, I'll address, um, our, our contractor was the one that spoke with the person at Montgomery County and my understanding was that she shared the plans specifically, uh, that you're all looking at and that you've seen and this is the first news that I've heard that their decision was reversed and, and that had not been, uh, shared with me or, or communicated or, or any of that, uh, until, until just now. Um, and, uh, and, and I, I, I really don't want to speak, uh, out of turn or out of order, but, um, I, I am respectfully going to take advantage of, of my opportunity to, uh, to speak here, um, because I, I, I do think that this is something that is important to, uh, say out loud and, and add just a little bit of context. So, you know, it was stated by Matt correctly, we're relatively new to, uh, to the town and, um, and, uh, you know, two, two physicians with two young kids and, uh, it's been a stressful and difficult year as it has been for everybody and so, you know, when we got this idea to put up a playhouse for our kids, um, uh, no, you know, permitting and, and that kind of thing did not come into, into mind. Um, and, and it has, it has turned into, you know, something that, that has been, uh, a lot of legwork that, that in our, in our minds was, was really just trying to do something nice for, for our kids in a, in a very, in a global pandemic and a very difficult, uh, time for them and for us as a family. Um, we will, we will do whatever is recommended and whatever we need to do to like rectify this, but I think, you know, when all's said and done, it's a playhouse for our kids, you know, yes, it's, it's like a robust one and yes, it's got like, you know, these, these like concrete things in the, in the ground that like, you know, we, we, you know, just for, for what we deemed was safety. that like, you know, we, we, you know, just for, for what we deemed was safety, uh, or what the contractor deemed was safety, but, um, we'll do whatever the council, you know, recommends. But I would like to, to just call out that like, we're talking about a playhouse. It's not going to be there forever. Uh, you know, our kids are, are, are young and, you know, limited schooling, et cetera. And, uh, and I, I would like that to be reflected.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Councilperson Peal, do you have any?
I, I think it would be, um, I think it would be really useful to everybody to have this really squared away, you know, to make sure that the Kaplans and their contractor and Doug and the county person are all in fact looking at the same thing and really considering whether or not a county permit is required. And, um, in any event, I think it would be useful for us to move the process forward if we could talk about approving this conditionally as, as Ron recommended, either to get an answer to that question or to condition our decision tonight on receipt of a permit if required. So that we don't, I guess, maybe what I'm saying is maybe it's not up to us to debate anymore whether or not the county should or does require a permit, but that we can just move forward and say, if we believe that the town does require a permit, then we have what we need in front of us to look at it and the location is the right location for our purposes. And so when we get to, um, you know, considering this, that we can make it as clear as possible for the Kaplans going forward.
This is Jim Gould. I'm just waiting for the opportunity to be heard.
Hold on, Mr. Gould. You'll have a chance to speak.
That, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Do you have any, any questions?
I don't. I'm finished for now. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Circo, do you have any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Barr.
Uh, I'm just going to say that I, I do understand that it's a playhouse we're talking about, but I did, I did go to look at it today. Once the rain finally stopped. But, um, and it, it is noticeably large and also at the moment in the corner of the yard. And I can very much understand the neighbors' concerns that it actually, um, did very much indeed their view and, and intrude upon them visually. So, um, I, I understand why it's now landed in our lap for that reason. Moving it then towards the center of the yard and to comply with what we require in setbacks is, is a good solution. And I'm glad that's going to happen. It's also a good solution that it be limited to 10 feet at that point because if it's more than 10 feet, then the setback have to be larger. So we, the reason why we're doing this is because something like this does affect the neighbors too. Understanding it's for your kids and it's for a playhouse and that's a good thing. But, but visually it does impact upon the neighbors and that's why it's before our council. Um, so I'll stop there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We will now open the floor for public comments. We ask that those making public comments, please be respectful of the council's time and keep all testimony and evidence relevant to the application at hand and not be repetitive. And, uh, Mr. Town Manager, has anyone raised their hand?
Um, yes, and I, uh, before I allow the Goulds to speak, I, I did just want to make note that, the Goulds did send an email to the town, which was included in your packet as well. So, um, I, I say that also for your benefit, uh, uh, Mr. and Ms. Gould. So you, you understand that the council did receive and has seen, uh, your, your comments there.
May we be heard?
Yes, now is your turn. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hearing.
This goes back unfortunately to early January when a, uh, thirteen-foot-high structure, two stories with footings was built, uh, three and a half feet from the, uh, south wall of forty-eight oh eight, south property line of forty-eight oh eight. And our property line, it was very, very prominent as Dabney told Dr. Kaplan it looms large. That was a polite understatement. I contacted the town manager promptly. This was back in the first or second week of January. The structure was completed thereafter and we, uh, let Ms. Dr. Kaplan know of our concerns. He informed us that it had been built by the contractor who had told him that there was no permit required for the original structure. So I'm quite, uh, wondering what's going on if now the contractor is saying there's no permit required for the fixed structure. We advised Dr. Kaplan that we certainly wish their children to have every opportunity to have a playhouse, but it also has to be give due consideration to neighbors and their property and code requirements. We understand that the original structure was some thirteen feet high, three and a half feet from the property line. Dr. Kaplan has been very responsive and has provided, uh, told us what had happened from his point of view and has advised us that he will fix it and provided the revised plans, which we understand are compliant with the county code. I'm now very concerned about this confusion about what the county is saying, and I think that's important to get resolved. Our position is it needs to comply with code. We want to be cooperative. But what is there now needs to be fixed and needs to be fixed pretty soon. Uh, it is very, very prominent, directly overlooking our property. So we wish it to be something that complies with code, provides whatever opportunities for the neighborhood kids, but it also needs to be fixed. And, and, and it's up to the, I guess, the town and the county to make sure it complies with code. We're supportive of the idea. The execution has had a lot of problems with it. Does that, does that conclude your? Let me just look at my notes.
Thank you.
We did see drawings of the revised plan. We did not see them, as I've indicated, for the first structure that was built. We did sign off on that. We have not seen, and that's not perhaps our business as to whether the other neighbors have, uh, signed off. We do know that the first, the construction that is there now violated apparently the setback law rules as to the property to the west of it. We don't know what, what views they have taken on this matter. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Uh, Mr. Town Manager, has anyone else indicated they wish to speak?
No, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Now, um, Mr. Kaplan, you have the opportunity to present any rebuttal, anything that has not been mentioned previously that might respond to the public comments presented. Did you have anything you wanted to say before we close the, uh, record, public hearing?
No, I think, uh, I think everything has been, has been said and for the most part, we're all in agreement that, uh, we need some resolution on the permitting. And as soon as that happens, then, uh, our, our contractor will move it and, and, and modify everything to spec as, uh, as we've, as we've discussed.
Okay, thank you very much. So this concludes the public portion of the hearing. The record is now closed. So at this point, council, based on what you've heard, is any council member prepared to make a motion? Councilperson Peal.
I, can I ask Ron another question before I make a motion?
Of course.
Ron, what kind of, um, what, what, what are we looking for from the county in terms of, um, some kind of opinion letter or something like that? What, what are we looking for in terms of a yes or no on whether or not they need to have a county permit?
Sounds like we've already got it. It sounds like Doug has received from the county confirmation that a permit is required. And if he's got an email, you know, to that effect, that would be great. And maybe there was just a, a confusion with respect to, you know, maybe, maybe the, I'm just speculating, maybe the contractor said, I'd like to build a playhouse as a permit required and the permit administrator was thinking a portable playhouse and said, no permits needed. But then once they saw the photo and saw that it is fixed to the ground, they then said the permit is required. That would be my guess, but, you know, I'd like to see what's been submitted, but it, it sounds like we have confirmation from the county, which, as I said before, is consistent with my understanding as to how the county views accessory structures. You know, if, if it's portable, no permits required, but if it's fixed, a permit is required. That's always been my understanding.
Well, so it sounds like.
I have an email.
Yeah.
I have an email from Friday afternoon stating that.
Um, unfortunately, unfortunate that the contractor didn't know about that. But in any event, thank you, Ron. I, I can make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, to approve the permit for construction of a playhouse, uh, conditional on receipt of, uh, of the underlying Montgomery County permit.
Is there a second? I saw Councilor Zoidh Hauser. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for participating. The next item is our building administrators' report. Mr. No Meyer.
Yes, a few things to go over. At fifty-eight hundred Deal, the applicant, uh, told us last week that they're still waiting for hand railing to be installed. It's on back order. And until that hand railing is installed, the county will not sign off on the permit. We've asked, uh, the homeowner to provide us with a list, an email of the list of outstanding items, but I don't think we've received that yet. But all of the exterior work has been completed. At forty-seven twelve Essex, uh, that building permit will expire in April. The work is proceeding and we'll be contacting them to see if they need an extension beyond April thirteenth. And the same thing is true for fifty-eight oh eight Uppingham. Their per, uh, permit expires at April twenty-second. Uh, I have removed two items from my, uh, status report. The building permit for forty-seven twenty-one Cumberland for that, uh, garage at the rear. I've, uh, provide, uh, visited the site and everything's compliance with the plans. And forty-eight oh nine Grantham, their additions are complete also. About just waiting for Wayne to do an air conditioning noise check. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Council President Shaw, do you have any questions? Thank you. Councilmember Zoidh Hauser. Do, you're muted. You're muted.
I have a question and this is just, if you could explain to me, um, it's also noted in, in Matt's report with Deal Place, I'm, I had brought up the, um, riverbed that goes out to the sidewalk. And I thought at the last council meeting, it was said that, uh, it would be left as it was. And now I've noticed in Matt's report and also in just looking at it, that some of the stones have been removed. And I wonder if you could just explain so that I understand, uh, a little bit better what, what happened there.
Uh, and I discussed it and I called the homeowner and asked if they could remove a couple of feet of the stone so that it would be not running up to the sidewalk, just as a safety factor, so somebody wouldn't trip over it or fall and hit the stones. And they agreed to have the landscaper remove approximately two feet of stone and they're going to be sodding the area as soon as the weather permits.
Okay, thank you. And then, uh, another question just on permitting. There's a structure going up, um, at, at the corner of, um, of Surrey and, uh, Greystone. I, I assume you've seen that?
Yes, that too.
Yes, and, and is that considered, again, this is just so I understand, is that considered a deck? What, what is, it has sides, it has footings. What is, and, and is that in the backyard or the side yard? If you could, does that not require a town permit? If you could just help me with that a little bit, please?
We looked into that and the, the applicant is replacing an existing deck at the same location and same size. So it did not require, uh, a town permit. It's just a replacement of an existing deck in the same location.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Peal, do you have any questions?
No questions.
Thank you. Councilperson Circo.
No question.
Thank you, Councilor Barr.
And thank you for answering, Doug.
No, okay. You said no questions, right? Thank you. All right, everyone. Uh, the next item is public hearing motion to consider approving testimony in support of an amendment to House Bill, this is, uh, Maryland House Bill six thirty-five, requiring a study from Montgomery County in regards to the September tenth, twenty-twenty flooding. Existing legislation requires a study for Prince George's County. Council President Shaw, are you, did you want to present that or would you like the town manager to?
Just a few words about it. This is very timely for us since we have a stormwater committee. It's also timely for some other communities in Montgomery County. As you can see, Chevy Chase View is also supporting this because they have stormwater issues. And it seems as though it makes a lot of sense to include Montgomery County for the same kind of study that, um, is being requested for, uh, Prince George's County.
So is the, so the, has the agenda item become, uh, endorsing what's in the letter from, uh, the Chevy Chase? Is that what you, is that what you're going to be proposing or just? Or just that we're going to say that we support it or what, what, what's your?
I mean, you could do something similar. I mean, they say their town council discussed it and voted to support the idea. I presumed you were going to write a short statement that reflected tonight's meeting.
Yeah, whatever you, whatever you, is, that's, that sounds good. Okay. Did you, did you have anything else you wanted to say?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zoidh Hauser, do you have any questions?
No, but it is very timely. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Peal, do you have any questions?
I don't think I have any problem with it, but I did wonder whether it would make sense to ask our stormwater committee whether they had an opinion about this, but maybe, maybe that's, maybe that's not important. I don't know. I mean, all we're doing is saying we want a study down from Montgomery County. That's all we're doing with this?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that's what the bill says.
Right. All right.
We're supporting the bill. I would imagine, I don't know how, I don't, can't imagine anybody would be opposing us.
Not opposing it either. Okay, sounds good. Bye.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Circo.
No question. I think it's a good idea. And I, I imagine the stormwater safety would support it.
Councilor, thank you. Councilor Barr, do you have any questions?
Uh, no questions. Sounds like a good idea, as Steve said. And it might at some future date, maybe get some state funds to help us with stormwater and it may be a step along that road.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest?
Uh, no, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Council, are you prepared to make a motion?
I moved at the council's support, uh, testimony by the mayor in favor of adding Montgomery County to, um, this H R zero eight oh nine bill.
I think it's two thirty, six thirty-five, but.
Oh, is that right? Sorry.
It, isn't it, I think it's six, anyway, I get, I get the, I think it's House Bill. And I see Councilperson Peal seconded it. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed? So we will, um, I will be testifying on Wednesday and we will send the letter. And I know that, uh, council, that, uh, Delegate Al Carr, who, whose bill this is, will be very excited that you have, uh, supported, that you'll be supporting this bill. Thank you. The next item, uh, report and recommendation from the Board of Supervisors of Elections. A, introduction of ordinance number one twenty-one for adoption of an emergency election plan for the twenty-twenty-one election. And B, discussion of possible introduction of resolution number three twenty-one-one for adoption of election rules and procedures. And what we're going to do is Matt is going to, uh, the town manager is going to. And what we're going to do is Matt is going to, uh, the town manager is going to, is going to give us the, uh, the timeline of how we got to this point. The town attorney will then, uh, comment on the proposal, the proposed legislation. And I want you to know that we are joined tonight by our distinguished Board of Supervisors Elections Chair, who will be available when we go through the round of questioning. So with that, I will turn it over to the town manager.
Thanks. Uh, yeah, just briefly, um, I reached out to Electech to provide us with a quote for the services that they provided last year so that when the Board of Supervisors of Elections met, they had something in hand to, to consider. Um, and as a follow-up, they met with myself and Sherry and Ron, uh, in a lead-up to the board meeting. And there's essentially, um, Ron can probably explain this better than I can, but there's, there's an emergency resolution for the election this year. And then there are procedures in place for moving forward. And so, um, they all sort of align for the most part, but there may be some, some elements of it, uh, the emergency resolution this year because of delivery, uh, issues with the mail, things like that, that might alter the dates slightly. But, uh, I think that's sort of a high-level view of it.
Okay. And if, if I could turn it over to the town attorney to explain, uh, what, in, in non-legal terms, why this is on the agenda tonight and what recommendations you're making to for the council action?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as everyone will probably recall, last year, the governor issued an executive order allowing municipalities to amend their charters on an emergency basis to allow elections to be conducted in a safe manner. So that if municipalities needed to change the date or the format of their elections, like moving to mail-in only elections, municipalities would have the power to do that by amending their charter. The town did amend its charter and the charter provides that if we're under a state of emergency, we can suspend requirements of the charter as we deem necessary for public health reasons. And so this ordinance that's presented declares that emergency. Because we're still under a state of emergency at the state level, we're declaring an emergency exists at the town level as well and that we're going to adopt an emergency election plan, which is attached to the ordinance, to allow for a vote-by-mail election, just like we did last year. Generally speaking, the plan is the same as last year. And we need this emergency plan because there are provisions in the charter that indicate we have to have in-person voting. There are references to the polls being open. And so we need to suspend those provisions that require us to have in-person voting. That's what this ordinance does. Now, as you also recall, some months ago, we discussed at a council work session that the charter also provides that there ought to be election rules and procedures governing such things as how absentee balloting is done, how voter registration is done. And so the second document that's on the agenda, after we get through this ordinance, is a proposed document called the Election Rules and Procedures, which would really apply next year. But, you know, because it's been an issue we've been working on, it's, it's all presented tonight as one, one package.
Okay, thank you. Madam Board of Supervisors Elections Chair, did you want to add anything before, uh, there are questions from the council?
Um, no, thank you.
Okay. And I do note that I, I'm glad to see that there are at least two other members of the board that are present here tonight. Thank you. So council, before, um, you, you take any action introducing an ordinance or, and I guess it's, I guess it's possibly introducing two ordinances and the town attorney will guide you on how he wants, he suggests that be done. But first we'll take questions from the council. Council President Shaw.
My only question is, are you setting up a special council meeting ahead of the work session?
Well, I think, I believe that's the recommendation of the town attorney. Is that right in the board?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question? I've got some background noise here. I'm trying to get rid of.
No, I, I just asked, seeing the March 11th reference several times, I was just asking whether you're planning on holding a special council meeting ahead of the work session on March 11th.
Oh, this, this can just be part of the, the work session agenda or labeled as a special council meeting, whatever you prefer.
Well, it would have to be a special council meeting in advance of the work session.
I would just say that we already have 10 items on the work session agenda, so I'm a little concerned about getting through it. So if we're going to meet on the 11th of March, we need to do it, you know, 10 or 15 minutes ahead of the 5:00 PM start of our work.
Mr. Town Attorney, uh, does it have to be? What date does it? What date does it have to be scheduled? Can it be scheduled before that? I mean, I, I don't think we want to burden anything more on the work session agenda. So is that the date that it needs to be voted on or can it be done at another time?
Let me look. I believe the charter requires six days in between. So, I mean, it could be earlier under that standard, but let me make sure that's right.
Not objecting to doing it on the 11th, I'm just saying, start, have a special council meeting at 4:45.
Yeah, we could, yeah, we definitely would do that.
I think it's, I think it's hard to find another date between.
Okay. Well, that wouldn't, it wouldn't be my, as the one who calls the meeting, it wouldn't be my recommendation to gallop it onto the work session.
That was my only question. Thank you.
We'll make sure we don't do that. Thank you. Council member Zoe Hauser. You're, you're muted.
I, I just have to say that I'm delighted to see that there are some, um, that there are some rules and procedures that will be going into place that I think will hopefully make, uh, this election much simpler and easier for all residents to understand. So thank you all for your hard work on this.
Thank you. Councilor PL, do you have any questions?
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Serko.
No question.
Thank you. Councilor Bar.
Well, it's just a suggestion that you're probably thinking of anyway to the Board of Supervisors Elections, which is, you know, pandemic lessons for our general election procedures. In other words, do we get something from the pandemic that would suggest we should amend our charter to make our elections easier in the future?
Okay, thank you. So at this point, Mr. Town Attorney, could you walk the council through how, uh, a, a ordinance? I, I presume the council wants to introduce both of these ordinances. So could you walk the council through?
Sure. So yeah, on the, on the first item, ordinance number 1-21, that is the declaration of emergency and the ordinance to activate the emergency plan. The emergency plan is attached, so we need a motion to introduce this ordinance, number 121. And then it would be considered further at the council meeting that will precede the work session or much of.
And it would be seconded and voted on. So Council President Shaw, would you like to introduce that?
I'm happy to introduce, um, ordinance number 1-21 for adoption of emergency election plan for the 2021 election.
Thank you. Is there a second? I see Councilor Zoe Hauser, Zoe Hauser. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. So that will be scheduled for, uh, vote on March 11th, not in conflict with the work session. Now, Council President Shaw, would you like to make a motion, introduce resolution number 3211?
Sure, but I have a question on this. So would this go on the April meeting?
So this, you know, I, I don't know if it's going to entail a lot of council discussion or not, because, I mean, there, there is some new material in here that you haven't seen before. What we've done is, this is a, a resolution, you know, as opposed to an ordinance. This does not amend the code like an ordinance would, although there are uncodified ordinances like the ordinance we just passed was. So that was a bad example. This resolution basically just adopts the rules for the election. The charter gives you the power to do so by resolution. The rules restate requirements of the charter. And then where we've tried to fill in some gaps, we've highlighted that new text in yellow. And so, I mean, this, this could be introduced tonight and it could be adopted at the council meeting preceding the works session as well, if you think it's ready. If you think it needs more discussion, then it could just be discussed tonight or at another time. You could introduce it tonight and then decide later, you need more discussion.
So with that, presidents, you want to introduce it tonight? Do you want to wait?
I'm happy to introduce it tonight. I've read it several times. Uh, so I'm introducing, uh, I'm moving to introduce resolution 3-211 for adoption of election rules and procedures. Very happy to do that.
Is there a second? I see Councilmember Zoe Hauser. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor? All those opposed? And I want to congratulate the council and the board for implementing our wonderful new procedures, which protect the integrity of the process and also guarantee the opportunity for public comment along the way. So thank you. The next item is, uh, public hearing motion to consider approval of a charter for the Town Environment Committee. Mr. Town Manager, can you present that?
Yes, uh, this was, we, we essentially have a template that we're using for, um, these committee charters, uh, and then making tweaks for the specific duties and charges of the various charger, uh, excuse me, charters.
Matt.
Yes.
Can I, can I go back to our, just because Sherry's here, I have, I have a request, um, that, that I would just like her to think about. Is that, is everyone okay with that?
Go for it.
Um, yeah. I just, with, with three vacancies coming out, uh, coming up to the town council, I wonder if you would entertain writing something that Matt could put on the town announcements, stating that there are actually three vacancies? If that could come from the board?
I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I just feel, um, I don't want this to come out in the wrong way, but it is what it is. The three women are leaving and we're leaving three white, or two white men and a white mayor as our elected officials. And, um, I think we should go for a little diversity.
You mean having a majority of men on council?
Absolutely.
Yes. I mean, the only, the only, the only way to reach out to the community at this point is through our town announcements. It wasn't in the journal that there are three vacancies. I had asked to have it in the journal, but it was denied. And at this point, I think we should, we should cast a broad net. And the only way people are going to know that there are vacancies is if the town makes some kind of, kind of announcement. And I think that, um, the board is, is the right vehicle for that.
Okay, thank you. Let's continue with the charter.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, council member. So these, uh, charters are relatively straightforward. I think they, they enumerate some specific duties of the various committees. And we're working on them for all of the committees. Uh, these are the two that have had an opportunity to meet, consider, discuss, and approve their chart, charters on the committees themselves. So the first before you is the environment committee, and then the second will be the public safety committee.
So why don't we combine these two items for the sake of time?
And, uh, actually, um, I just wanted to mention one, and we can, we can discuss this further, but one comment I got was the, um, in the duties, uh, for the environment committee, it, it lists recommendations for expenditures to improve town operations and activities throughout the year. That was in there, um, and can be, can be clarified if, if you want. The reason that was in there is because we had decided that any committee spending over $500 needed to be voted on by the committee and approved, or all committee expenditures need to be voted on, but any committee expenditures over $500 need to be brought before the council. And so even if there are budgeted items, for example, um, I, I, the reason that's in there is to, um, to make clear that the, the committee is still responsible for making the recommendations to spend that money and, and to make those expenditures.
But that, but those are under the authority of the town manager, not the committee? Because the committee can't spend money, right, Mr.?
Oh, oh, yeah, yes. No, no, no. I, 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 I'm sorry. I didn't understand exactly what you meant. Yes, yes, exactly.
The recommendation from the committee to you as you.
Exactly, exactly.
And, and I'm sorry for the confusion, but let's keep these questions just on the environment committee and then we'll do separate on public safety. Council, President Shaw, do you have any questions?
Yes, I, I do appreciate, um, your explanation, Matt. I just hope somebody doesn't read this to say they can come back during the year at any time to ask for more money for anything. And since you put this in as a template, it's in both charters, um, under duties. I, I just wouldn't want anybody to be confused that, that if a good idea came up in the middle of the year, they could ask for, uh, more money because there might not be any money to, to go to in the budget. So I don't know if there's a way to tweak the wording a little bit, or maybe nobody else had that same.
Well, maybe, I think it's a very good point and maybe by the time the motion's made, Matt can come up with some language that you can amend it. Did you have any other questions? Madam President, do you have any other question?
No other questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Zoe Hauser. You're muted. You're muted.
My concern is, um, it's not only, uh, the, the dollars that this opens up, but it's also opening up, uh, the amount of work. It's for our town staff and with 12 committees that are all basically being given the same guidelines, um, it's, and, and with the environment committee, I think we can talk about that now, they have, they have a whole host of projects for you, Matt. And I just wonder, so it's not only the money, but it's, do you, as our town manager, feel any need to limit the number of projects that can be taken on by each committee? Because I, I, I kind of feel like much of your day is being driven now by committees. And, and I guess I'm not asking for an answer, but, uh, in looking at the budget for next year, uh, Marnie pointed out the, the dollars, but I'm, I'm pointing out the time. And, and I see this as a big draw, the committees as a huge draw on your time when you have committees coming at you with two, particularly, we're talking about the environment committee with a variety of projects that they would like for you to, to work on. So again, I'm, I'm not looking for a response, but I ask that you think about that when we prepare the budget for next year.
Okay, thank you. Did you have a, is that your last question?
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember PL.
Um, I don't think I have any comments on the charters, but just to follow Barbara's line of thinking, I wonder if we should, um, consider asking sort of for a broad agenda from each committee before the year? um, consider asking sort of for a broad agenda from each committee before the year begins so that we understand what the scope of their plans might be. I mean, in some cases, we have committees that sort of just hold steady, like, you know, the tennis committee. You know, anyway, well, I, I don't know what a good example would be, but for instance, we just put into place this public safety committee and gave them a lot of ideas from the residents that we want answered and so on. And we have our stormwater committee, which, you know, has a big mandate. And, um, I mean, maybe that's part of it is that we sort of need to have a little bit of a sense of what the outline is of the work that they expect for the year that goes along with their budget requests.
I think that's a very good point, and that goes hand in hand with the budget requests that these committees make. So at the time that the budget, that the, you know, we ask these committees to make budget requests for the year. So that's at the same time they should, and, and that's something that when Matt has his, well, that could be added to the protocols, by the way. And that also can be a topic that Matt, when he has his meeting with the committee chairs to bring up. But this is the perfect time because now we're just on the eve of budget season. And that, and that now is our, our, it's a perfect time to educate these committees along that line because I think it's a very good suggestion. And to address what Councilmember Zoig Hauser said, Zoig Hauser said, it's also, uh, appropriate when, during your budget session, when staffing for the town hall, when that line comes up. So that's all excellent. Did you have any other questions?
No, I think we, what we might want to say when we get down that road would be to ask the committee chairperson to provide information as to how they plan to carry out their agenda, whether it's by volunteer work or by, uh, town staff work. And we have to ask them to, to specify so that we can have a conversation about how that matches up with our resources.
That's very appropriate.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Circa, do you have any questions? On the charter.
Just, um, on the charter for the, the environment committee, so I'm, I'm just, I'm hearing that it's, uh, burdensome. Manager, but I looked at the charter, the only thing that specifically talks about the manager is Assistant to Town Manager for making public notices. And I was just curious if, if Matt, Matt feels that this is burdensome? Or, or what, or what asks the environment committee are burdensome?
Sure, um, so I, I would say that anything related, uh, burdensome was not near my, am I, do I have a good, do I have a good connection, by the way?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I would not, I would not categorize, you know, the volunteers as burdensome in any way. So I, I just wanted to make that clear. But anything related to budget requests does necessarily usually require some research or staff time, at least in terms of researching, um, you know, for example, the apiary that the environment committee is looking at right now, um, does involve me reaching out to the insurance company to see how that might, might be affected. That's just one small example. And so I think a lot of, oh, when we're talking about the budget, um, indirectly, I think it, it does, it does affect the staff. But to the mayor's point as well, I, and, and Franny had some good suggestions. I think we tried to bake into the committee protocols ways to, um, sort of put in place a process by which specific requests can be made for, uh, town, town staff's time.
Okay, Councilor Circa, do you have any other questions?
No, that's it.
Thank you. Councilor Barr.
I mean, just on the, on the general topic, I, I, I'm quite happy to approve the two charters, but, um, I very much appreciate the volunteers that we have in town who care so much about the town that they get involved on committees and make recommendations to us for ways in which we can improve the town. That, that I think is, is a vital part of our town. And I don't want them discouraged at all. And I got the sense from a couple of the members that there was some sense of discouragement. And I hope that wasn't true. I speak as a past environment committee chair, and there's no way the environment committee can plan all its events a year ahead of time because stuff happens. Uh, I can only just refresh memories on the pesticide ban, which arrived during the year from the program officer in the county Department of Environmental Protection to Matt, who passed it on to me when I was still the chair of the environment committee. And that led to a whole lot of work for the council, in fact. And it happened during the year, disappointing, could not have been anticipated at the start of the year.
Well, that's, that's always true, Councilmember Barr, but in terms of an efficient government, I think that it would be better to ask at budget time. And, you know, this is how, for example, the Congress works.
Asking at the budget time makes sense. I mean, and that's, that's, it's just part and parcel.
Everybody understands that things could come up. But I think that in terms of planning, we want to get the, we, we want to encourage the committees to plan their year. And then if stuff comes up, that's fine, but I, I, I don't think, I, I think the two things can work at the same time. Planning and also being adept and, and, and adaptable if something comes up.
I, I think asking them to do the budget as a plan for the year does make sense. It's a plan for expenditures for the year. But it, it is, we do have to also get across that we understand other things to happen.
I think we all understand that things come up, so, but thank you for that input. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest, uh, raised their hand wishing to speak on this issue?
Not at this time, no.
With that, uh, I would like, would anyone like to make a motion to approve the charter for the environment committee?
Well, one, um, before, before that, I, I, um, I thought that may, maybe this might assuage, um, the, the concerns about expenditures throughout the year. Maybe I could add, um,
Right, right.
Uh, recommendations for, uh, previously budgeted expenditures to improve.
Okay, so who would like to make a motion with that amendment added? Council President Shaw, do you, oh, Councilmember Barr?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the environment committee charter with the amendment as noted by Matt, that it's recommendations for previously budgeted items.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? I see Council President Shaw. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you. So the next item is consider approval of a charter for the public safety committee. Did you wish to add anything, Mr. Town Manager?
I don't think so. I think it's relatively straightforward, um, that, uh, there are some tweaks in there based on the charges of the, of the two committees and the differences between them. But, um, nothing, uh, nothing I need to add at this time.
Okay, thank you. Council, President Shaw, do you have any questions?
But we'll add those same, that same phrase into this one as well. As an amendment.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Zoig Hauser.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peal.
No questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Circa.
Nope.
Thank you, Councilmember Barr.
No questions.
Thank you. Mr. Town Manager, has any resident or guest raised their hand?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Hearing none. Council President Shaw, did you wish to make the motion?
We move that we accept the charter of the public safety committee with the amendment of previously budgeted in item one under duties.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second? I saw Councilmember Barr first. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? All those opposed. Thank you very much. And now we get to our last item, the manager's report. Mr. Town Manager.
Just running through a couple of the items, uh, in terms of the budget, uh, when I wrote this, we had not received our February income tax deposit from the comptroller, and we ended up getting it on Friday. We were hoping and optimistically anticipating that the February numbers might see an increase over previous years to sort of balance out what had been down numbers, uh, in November. And unfortunately, that was not the case. And so we are doing a little bit of investigating to see exactly why we are so significantly down from last year. There, the comptroller's office did indicate that there was a drop in, uh, the highest income bracket, which I think was essentially millionaires in town. But, uh, I don't think that that is an entirely, um, entirely answers for why those numbers are seeing the change year over year, uh, that, that we've realized this year. Especially when we look at our town in comparison to some of our neighboring towns, which are not seeing the same budget crunch that we are all of a sudden. So I don't have a, a really big update other than not good numbers. We're not sure why, because in fact, when we met with the comptroller's office, it was a very rosy outlook, actually, in terms of, um, what we had been thinking might be coming down the pike in terms of austerity and lost revenue. On better news, um, I did get a message from the county that we were approved for a grant as part of the first CARES Act. So we have been tentatively approved for just under $3,900. So I signed, uh, an MOU with Montgomery County. They're just processing the final agreement. But sometime this month, that should, um, that should come to us. And, uh, with any luck, there will be another round of, uh, stimulus money for the pandemic that the town might be able to recruit additional expenditures. So we will continue to monitor that as well. A couple of expenses that, um, I just wanted to highlight. One was snow. Uh, we had a very snowy February, as, as we all know, um, and pretty much our entire snow budget was, uh, was in the, was just in the month of February. But overall, we have stayed under budget on snow removal. The biggest expense, as maybe expected, is the sidewalk removals, especially because we didn't, we never got a huge dumping of snow that required a lot of plowing hour by hour. But we did get a lot of freezing nastiness that accumulated and that required some, some TLC for the sidewalks to keep them from getting too, too nasty. Another that we don't have any, we haven't realized any expenses on this yet, but, uh, two pieces of equipment have failed at the town office. One is our defibrillator machine. So, um, it's probably about 10 years old, I think. Is that, Linda, correct me if I'm wrong. I think it's 10 years old.
Uh, was what, the 2002? So it's almost.
Okay, so I stand corrected. It's 18 years old. So, uh, kind of a funny story, um, quickly. Linda and, and I, every day at around two o'clock in the afternoon, we would get a message that said, "Low battery." And both of us for about two weeks thought it was coming from the other person's office, that it was maybe a phone or some, something along those lines. And finally, we said, "What is, where is that coming from?" Uh, we checked the closet in my office. It wasn't coming from there. We narrowed it down to somewhere around the kitchen. We thought maybe the, the fridge or something was making a funny sound. But finally, we found the defibrillator in, uh, uh, um, in a cabinet that, sure enough, that's where the sound was coming from. So Linda's been looking into some options to get a new defibrillator and will, will probably, um, take some, take a class as well, um, that they offer when you, when you purchase them. So that we're covered for that. Um, the other is that the town, the town truck's transmission is failing. And when it was brought in, it was by, over $5,000 to replace it. And so this, the truck is about 12 years old. And so it's a question of whether it's worth the investment of $5,000 into transmission, which is sort of a notoriously turkey piece of equipment in the truck where might last you three months, it might last you three years. But given the value of the truck may not be the best investment right now. So, uh, we're going to look into what our other options are. We might get pricing for a new truck or used truck. Another option that I, I thought of that I'd like to look into is perhaps leasing a vehicle, especially given that we don't put a lot of mileage on it. That might be a cost effective move right now. And, and also would allow three years down the line, or whenever the lease ended, there might be better options in terms of electric vehicles. For example, if we get an electric vehicle charger at the town hall, um, something like that, instead of investing, um, in a new truck, you know, this year, one of the last years that, you know, as, as electric, uh, technology gets better and better, um, we might be in a better place three years from now. So that might be a cost effective, uh, option. But in any case, uh, Enrique and I are, are going to, um, take a trip to, um, at least, at least the dealer that we've, we've gone, we've dealt with in the past and figure out some of our options there. I will, I, I just wanted to point out, I, I, I'm open to feedback on, I sort of tweaked the, uh, format of my report. So hopefully that's helpful to have the permits on this report and, um, a quick little update on the various committees. This might also fall in line with some of the things that Councilmember Peal was suggesting and the mayor had referenced, um, if it becomes maybe part of the committee's jobs to give us periodic updates so I can, um, then pass those along in my report to you. Um, most of the committees were able to meet in the month of February, which is, which is good because we are coming up on, on budget season, as, as we mentioned. And, and as, when we were discussing the charters, just to reiterate that, uh, we have, we have draft charters ready for most, if not all, of the committees. So hopefully over the next month, month or two, we should get them all squared away and specific, um, specific duties and charges of the different committees. So that that's set in stone and people know what they're signed up for and, um, and everything's copacetic in that respect. Couple of other things, um, in terms of the website, I have received a couple that have come through. So I expect to have a fairly good number to go through and consider. Hopefully at the April meeting, the, the council will have a recommendation and proposal before you. The communications committee is also planning to do a quick interview, um, Q and A with, uh, finalists for the, for the, uh, for the contract, uh, to make a recommendation for you as well. I'm working on finalizing an audit for, or excuse me, an RFP for the audit. So I, I got a couple of reference ones, um, should have that out in the next week or so. But then hopefully by May, uh, can't recall off the top of my head now, but if, if the current contract runs out in May or June, but it's it's sort of immaterial, because by the time it runs out, the they've already completed their audit for this year. So the new auditor will be responsible for this fiscal year. On the other, I wanted to talk about briefly was trash and recycling. Last year, the council approved a one, one year option of the current contract. I wanted to get a sense, and I don't know if this is the right time or not. If we should just do another option, do another option year? Or if I should start to prioritize putting out a new RFP and advertising that? Let's see. Just quickly, I'll just quickly run through a couple of things before I take any questions or comments from you. Mayor and I should have a personnel manual updates for you at the work session. I wrote up some, some stuff from Washington Gas. I won't go through it here, but if you have any questions, happy to take them. You all received an update on the records retention project. One thing that is the mayor, the mayor alluded to that we'll be meeting with some folks at the PTA and the principal this week. The school Somerset Elementary is going to begin March 15th, so two weeks from today. So they start with K K through two will do in-person learning. Right now, they're estimating about 150 kids. And then three weeks later, grades three, four, and five start in-person learning. One issue that we may see is traffic. The buses are only allowed to be at 25% capacity. So the way I thought about this was, well, even if only 50% of the kids decide they're going to do in-person learning, that still means we're going to get twice as many buses. So I've been talking with with them about some potential ideas, maybe even having the town pool area as a drop-off site for some kids. And the school then having helpers to walk them up Warwick to the town hall instead of instead of having all that traffic on Warwick, right by the school and on Cumberland. But we're going to, we're going to talk to them and sort of brainstorm on best ways to try to, try to manage that. But I anticipate it being a little bit of a headache and a little bit hectic this year. We already talked about Camp Somerset. The last thing I will mention is the Pepco charging station that we've mentioned before. I did get a draft agreement. So I will present that shortly at the, at the work session and hopefully arrange planning to have Pepco attend our April meeting to answer any questions that you might have and then maybe consider moving forward and next steps on that.
Thank you for that outstanding report. Before I take questions, I want to say two things. One is, I do think it would be good if tonight Matt got a sense of the council regarding the trash contract. Because he would need to prioritize, you know, just so when he's planning his work. And the second thing is, I do want to assure everyone that we won't make any agreement with the, with the school about what they, what they're proposing without approval by the council. Because I, I, I don't, I don't. I think it requires review by the council. And and you know, they always try to, the, the school and the PTA often try to put a lot of pressure on us. And that's fine, but we, they, they have to know that, you know, they're within our town and they need to be respectful of, you know, our residents and all that. And and there've been a lot of violations in the past of that. So so I just want to make it clear to you that you're not going to get a phone call from somebody complaining, why did the town agree to do all this? Because because remember, they, they're in our town, but we don't have an obligation, you know, we don't have any obligation to that. They're, they're like any other, you know, resident. And we don't have any kind of special, well, we have a little bit of a special obligation, but we, we don't. Our priority is our residents. So, okay, with that, council president, Charlotte, do you have any questions?
I thought you were going to focus on the trash contract first. Is that right? Because I have a lot of questions.
I just think at the end of the questions, I would hope that Matt would get a sense of. So if everybody could at least comment on that, so he can get a sense of what you want him to do.
Well, I hope people will be patient with me because I actually have a lot of questions, but I'm hoping some of them are the same questions that you would raise and we're just going to kind of go through them. So I'm first of all, in Matt's managers reported, Matt, I want to congratulate you for getting money. That was great that you were able to fly and get money for us. That's good. And we'll have to keep counting on that going forward, especially if our income tax revenues don't pick up. I had a couple of things on page two, and this goes to an earlier discussion about committees and work. I see the stormwater study. The committee requests the town staff provide a list of tree permits and removals since 2010. Is that something that the town feels its staff to do? Why is this not being done by committee volunteers? How much time would it take? So anyway, that was, so that's one question.
Yeah, so that was a tricky one, because in in some ways, we are a victim of our own poor records keeping there, where it would be nice to have those records. Unfortunately, the only real place to have them is to go through the town journals and then to cross-reference old permits from town journals. So I, I told the stormwater committee that they could go through the town journals and find it if they wanted. Or that I could go through it, but it will take me a while to do that and that I, I wasn't able to make it an immediate priority. The reason I offered that is, is because, as I said, I think it would be a valuable thing for that town to have if we updated and had a list of permits going back that way.
Matt?
Why don't you wait?
But, but
this item, yeah.
I, this is on this item. It's just an idea. It doesn't need to take long. I just want to throw out, is it possible that Tolbert has a record of the trees that we've taken down?
That's what I was hoping. But no.
No record, not even on his bills?
Well, I mean, so the problem is not necessarily the last two or three years. It's going back. You know, when, when we have to find 2010, 2011, 2012. Tolbert lost a lot of his emails, unfortunately. And the towns.
Okay, so my, my next suggestion would briefly would be to suggest to the Stormwater Management Committee that they might reach out for help from the PNRC on this. So anyway, that's it. But Marnie, back to you.
Well, that's known. I think it's good to clear these items as we go on. One of the committee members from the Stormwater Committee some months ago raised with me whether the town could give SSL, is that the right phrase, credits to students who would take this on as a project? I mean, is that another possibility?
Okay, well, I will talk to the, I will work with Matt and the chair of the Parks Committee to find out.
I have to say, I'm, I'm a little confused because again, one day when I was walking our dog, one of the committee members told me that she was going through all of the journals and making a record of the trees that she had off, she had taken it on. Is that just wrong? Was I missing?
Can talk to you maybe offline about that, if you want to have about it.
I have, yeah, because I, I, I would appreciate that. Thank you. Because I listened for about an hour. So that would be great.
Yeah, again, part of it is we're, we're a victim of our own records keeping practices. So.
Well, the journals, the journals are on the website. That is the one thing that is on the town website.
That's right.
Right. So that's just a lot of clicking.
Marnie, we'll update you on that at our meeting next week, which we need.
That's great. The only other item I had on the administrative matters is I, you mentioned that you were working on finalizing an RFP for the audit. And it seems like you, we had included in the responsibilities of the audit committee getting involved in the RFP and the selection. And so I don't know whether you've reached out to that committee, Robin, you're the lead on that, aren't you?
I haven't already shot the committee yet.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
I just said I haven't already talked to the committee yet, no.
But, but you're the lead, right? So you would be the right person to, to do that.
Yeah, my, my plan was similar to, to the way we've handled the charters is draft something and then loop in at that point. Robin, who's the liaison and then the committee itself to, to take a look at it and offer any recommendations.
That'd be great. The one thing I would ask is that you put specifically in the contract the supplemental schedule that's not required in the audits. We asked over and over again with our current auditors to provide that. It's the only place where we have the year-end actual audited spending by specific category. We have not had that for several years. And given how crummy some of our records have been, not your fault. That it's really critical that the audit contained that level of detail, so that when people want to know how much should we spend on this, not the big category, but the little that, that it's there and they know it's an audited number. And so please put it in the, the RFP, because otherwise you'll get what we got from the current auditors, which is a brush off.
Yeah, and some of the examples that I have explicitly asked for something along those lines. So I think I have a good good template to work off to make sure that we get those moving forward.
I was going to move on to the budget. My first question is, do you think with property taxes, we're going to get close to 100% or not? Given that we're already probably down on income taxes, it would be nice if the property taxes were close to budget.
Yeah, our property taxes are looking right in line with, with the budget amount at this point.
What about interest? We're at like 6%? Is that likely because interest rates are so low that it's not going to?
I'll double check on that. I'll make sure that that's updated. I know that the interest rates are much lower than what we were hoping when we moved the savings over into those accounts. So it's not accruing as much as we were hoping, but I'll double check and make sure that that's reflected in there.
Because we're what, two thirds of the way through the year?
Yes.
We're only at 6%. So that's not, not good. Under permits, we've talked about this before. We are showing one dumpster permit for $75. That's been what's there for a long time. But your administrative report shows that three more dumpster permits have been approved. We've talked about those. There was one on Cumberland. There's one on Dorset. I don't remember where the third one is. But none of those are reflected in the actual receipts?
Yeah, I'll.
What's the problem here? Is it, is it whoever's entering the numbers isn't entering them correctly? There's a, or is there a huge lag? Because this has been the same $75 for a long time.
I think there's a combination of, of things getting caught in the, in the larger building permit category, but also we have some checks in the office that we just haven't had an opportunity to deposit yet. So for this, for this month, for example, we don't, we, you know, those aren't in there.
Right, but these go back more than this past month. They, they've been around for a while, I think. And they aren't part of building permits. They're just dumpster permits.
Right.
Because it's interior work. Okay. All right. So that's it for me on the operating side. So moving along. I'm online, 61200 salary expenses. What is that, 33268?
Sorry. 61 2
0 0.
612100?
No, 61200. Right ahead of the mayor.
Oh, um. Interesting, because it's not. It looks like it's not adding up. Okay, I'll, I'll check on that. Yeah, it should be, that should be a Oh, oh, the reason that that's there is it's like up at the, up at the top, where right under expenses, it shows the, the broader category at first. So there's the 61, 61,000 category for personnel. Then there's a 6,2000 for professional services. So that's, that's just breaking it down to show basically our contractors separate from our actual staff.
I still don't understand that. Like when you look at 61200, that's a zero, because it's like the overall category. Here, 61200 has an actual number.
I'm sorry, 6, oh, oh, okay. I'm sorry. I was looking at 62000. Okay. Salary expense. Huh, okay. I, that's a good question. I'm guessing that something was coded incorrectly. I can try to look it up real quick for you if you'd like.
Or just get back to me. I mean, it's enough money, $33,000.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
It's not, it's not pocket change. Another question I had in payroll is 61205. Is that Donna?
61205. Let's see, 612. Yes, that's, that's right.
Isn't she under professional services because it's a contract?
She's not a contract. So she's, she's run through payroll, so we pay payroll taxes for it. It's a part-time, part-time position.
Is that what the council approved? I thought we approved a contract.
We approved a part, a part-time temporary staff member.
So we're paying all benefits on this?
We're paying medic, you know, Medicare, we're paying FICA. We're not, we're not paying retirement and health insurance benefits. Because it's part-time.
Why do we set it up that way instead of professional services?
Right, she's a part-time employee. She's a part-time regular employee with us. Does she have an end date?
Yes.
What's, what's her end date?
June 1st.
And she's aware of that? That's in her paperwork?
Yes. Yep. I can send you a copy of the, of the contract or the offer that we that we sent her.
But, but you pay, we pay her by the hour?
She's paid hourly, yes. She's paid hourly, yep, yep.
Mayor President, is that your last question?
I know. Matt, you probably still have the workers' comp issue on your list of follow-up. Is that right? I know you were having trouble reaching them and to find out why our workers' comp bill has gone up by so much.
Yes, I have that. I I I have, I still have that on my agenda.
With our garden supervisor. Are we going to be getting something from her about the areas that we were concerned about, the rain gardens and so on? I mean, we're getting close to the planting season.
Yes, in fact, I'm planning to meet with her on Wednesday to discuss that. She said that they have a draft of their manual ready to discuss and are going to have some recommendations for plantings to purchase and talk about installation.
We have some money in the capital budget for that, correct?
Yes, yep, that's right.
This relates to our, the question about the contracts. I'm looking at line 70200, the recycling contract. We're at right around 35%, even though we are two thirds of the way through the year. Is there some explanation for that?
Yeah, the way our, the way our, it should be half as much as the as the trash pickup. So I think we're is that right? Half as much? I'd have to, I have, I'd have to go back and check the contract. But in any case, we, yes, we do, we pay significantly less in recycling than we do for the trash and for the trash pickup, and it's actually looking out that way in our contract.
Yeah, I I understand that, but they haven't billed us but a small fraction of what we set aside for them, even though it's a lot less than what we pay for the trash. So.
Are they behind in billing us perhaps?
Hold on, let.
Yeah, I mean, that could be the same.
They sometimes are, but I don't believe they're behind at this point. Linda, are we still waiting for, we we might be a month, one month, but nothing, nothing.
At last, I just paid them for February today, so so that's probably not reflected, yeah.
That's not quite reflected, but not enough that would, you know, that would mean that we're jumping up to a more significant percentage of our budgeted amount.
Then I I guess the last thing, I was looking at the gas bill, which I'd seems like that's line 71110, which is probably going to be important information for the work session.
In terms of the.
How much it costs to heat the pool?
Yeah.
We're gonna.
Yes, and and it is, it is higher because of the extended pool season from the fall.
Note that we still have money in the in the capital budget for curbs or streets, streets. Are we going to be looking at street work yet this fiscal year?
So the what we had discussed when we created the budget, that money was for a to hire a consultant to do things like core sampling. I would just as soon not spend that money this year and or use that to pay for election costs, for example. Or cover on on unforeseen expenditures. But in any case, that's what that was there for. It wasn't for actual construction.
I would just say, I think our roads look like they're getting much worse, and that's something to think about. That is, that is for me for questions. I hope I covered some things that other people had questions about.
And we'll, we'll follow up at the meeting next week, too. Councilmember Zoe.
Thank you, Marnie.
You have any questions?
Yeah, some of mine were duplicative. But a couple, Matt, can you just refresh my recollection? This is on the capital expenses, the line 67205, the $10,000, what was that for?
67205 renovations. That was, we had talked about putting railings on the outside of the side entrance to the town hall.
Gotcha.
And to redo that entrance.
Okay, and then are we moving ahead with the water fountain for the tennis court? I guess we set aside $1,000 for that.
I haven't received any information from the tennis committee about that, but I can follow up with Carrie and see if that's something that they wanted to pursue this year.
Okay, and then I think my only, I guess just because we'll be, again, we'll be meeting on the budget. Can you just make sure that all the contractors are current in their billing? So that when we look at it in March, it's not that, oh, someone hasn't submitted their bill for the last four months, so I don't really know if that's a hard number.
Yes.
If you could do that. And then didn't we sweep the streets once, or was that wrapped into something else? That get wrapped into another item? But we did sweep them once. I remember Ray Brothers did do that, but I see there's no charge for that here.
We did. That may have been last fiscal year, though, and I, because wasn't it in?
I don't think we've done it this fiscal year.
I think it was last May or June that we did it.
Okay, okay.
And we did, we did the leaf, you know, the leaf vacuuming in the fall, but I think I think it's not there because.
Didn't they sweep at the same time that in the fall? Didn't they do that? I thought they did. I thought they said it was easier for them to do it that way.
They had, they had suggested in the fall that moving forward, what might be best for us and for whoever we chose as a contractor would be to do a year-round contract that tied in both street cleaning and leaf vacuum or leaf pickups together.
I see, I see. Okay, that's it for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Pio.
Um, yes, I just have two questions. The first one is for Matt on the trash contract. Are you satisfied with the work they've done this year? And have you gotten complaint, a lot of complaints from the town? Or do you have anything to tell us about the experience over the past year?
I think that I I don't have any specific complaints. I I do know they are sometimes a little bit slow to get their bills in, but but otherwise. No, I think I think the service itself, I haven't. You know, we feel the occasional call of missed this, that, or the other, but certainly nothing rampant. And I would, I I don't believe that it's any higher than it would be for any other company.
Okay, so just for, just so for the record, I guess I would be in favor of you just extending their contract if you need a sense from me, anyway. And the only other thing I wanted to mention is that when you meet with the school officials, regardless of what you intend to do, I think it would be really important what you intend to do in terms of the pool, I think it would be really important to get very detailed information about what time the kids are coming to school, because we have street signs in place right now for Warwick Place for one-way traffic. And I think with school being out of session for a year now, our town residents will have forgotten about that. And I think it would be really, it might even be important, like now, to send a message out to the town saying school's going to be back in session. There will be one-way street restrictions going back into effect, you know. Start paying attention to it. We've all gotten a little rusty or something like that, just because I don't know what time they're going to drop the kids off, but if they have to run all of those buses at 20, buses at 25% capacity and starting with the high school kids who, you know, even though Somerset is starting up, there's also the high school buses that come through and the middle school buses that come through the town of Somerset and pick up kids. And those things are going to be start happening, happening as well. So it's not just the elementary school buses, but all of those buses are running at 25% capacity. I think things are going to be staggered and delayed. And our street signs, we might have to vote to temporarily suspend them until school is back to a normal, you know, timetable. Because it, or maybe we extend them, I don't know. But we may have to make some kind of change to our actual, those are in the code, you know, to what those signs say.
Well, your excellent questions are the reason why we're not going to make a deal without.
No, I'm fine with making a deal with this in the pool. It's not that, it's just that I think actually the impact on the town is not going to just be about the elementary school. So I would say that whatever you do in addition to what you say to the elementary school people, you also need to start telling the people in town. Even if you don't have kids in MCPS, pay attention, because these things are going to start happening. Kids are going to be walking on the sidewalks, kids are going to be waiting at the bus stops, the buses are going to be going through town. We all have to be patient, and we have to say that because, you know, people are going to be annoyed. It's not going to be back to school as normal for any of these kids.
Yeah.
Okay, those are all excellent questions.
That's all I have.
That's why I said, I would anticipate that this proposal, this agreement is going to have to be voted on pretty soon, so. So I'm glad you're raising these issues that we can bring up, because like I said, I don't think it's a good idea for us to cut any, make an agreement with them without council input.
I guess I'm just saying, don't wait for that meeting before sending a reminder to the town.
I think Matt understands.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Circo, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
And last but not least, which is Councilor Bar, between our dinner and your president, your questions.
I'll make a short. The the first thing is that it's now looking likely that we will have a down year in our budget this year. Income taxes are two thirds of our total revenue, and they are down significantly. We have a rainy day fund, and we need to think about implementing the rainy day fund, is what it comes down to. We probably need to get it on a work session agenda, because there are some decisions we have to make about when we implement it and what we implemented on. In other words, what do we sacrifice? What do we think is essential that we use rainy day funds for? On the re, trash and the recycling contract. In our committee, he's last year recommended we go to two-stream recycling. That that still stands, but we don't have the money for two-stream recycling this year either, having seen the budget. So one-year extension, like, would make sense again, in the hope that our budget recovers next year. That's it.
Okay, well, thank you, and thank you, everyone for this meeting, and we will see you all on March 11th at 5 o'clock and probably at 4:45.
One, oh, actually, one thing before we go, I'm sorry that I didn't mention this. I would like to lock us in for March 15th for our first budget meeting. If that is okay with every, I think everybody had indicated that that was okay. Unfortunately, I think we're going to miss Ann Bolton for maybe the first first portion of the meeting. But unfortunately.
What time? What time?
Five to seven, and and you're.
I had, I I had said even five to 7:30 potentially, so that the Budget Committee could do their presentation at the onset of the meeting.
I still leave at 6:55 or 6:58. I have another meeting at 7:00 I have to do.
I I thought the meeting times were floated at 5:30 to 7:00 on the Doodle poll. Is that wrong?
I think it's, I think what I had originally, and I apologize that it maybe was unclear. What I, what I was hoping was the first, the first meeting would be, we would have an extra half hour so that the Budget Committee could do their kind of quarterly report for the council. And then the second one would be 5:00 to 7:00.
Okay, so what is your announcement for the time of the March 15th?
We can just do five, we'll, we'll just plan 5:00 to 7:00 then. So that.
And then you're going to get back soon when the second meeting is.
The second meeting, I I believe I sent out an email already saying the 23rd.
And and just go over the time then, Matt? What time?
They they'll both be 5:00 to 7:00.
Okay.
But I I will, tomorrow, I will check those off on Doodle, so you should get a get a reminder from Doodle that those are, those are the dates and times.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
See you soon.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.